I'm not sure, uh, sent a couple of things.
You have the best ideas, fix it to a can or a bar.
Yeah, maybe on the corner or something, yeah.
And I'm not sure that I haven't heard back from us.
I like that one too.
If you guys wanna send Todd, if it's just the beginning of the year and the kids haven't learned enough to do that, we should just talk to Deval. I don't know how you guys wonder about that.
Wanna get a price, wanna get a price for Deval?
Okay.
I like those.
And what, just reject it, reject it and uh?
For that one, just reject it on top and get rid of the comments section.
I think it should say. That you know, no?
Yeah.
This way it could just be used for any, it could be used for any single town.
Dog time, well just have it get about that. Yeah, so just it'll all just get moved down a little bit, you don't need the comments section.
Do you want your cell phone number on it too?
Well Todd gave us last one, we could just give it again every month, every week.
Oh, thank you. Cause that said, you know, they must be cleaned and.
Clean, loose and place in a container.
I'm just thinking we could take.
It says cardboard on that, two by two, is it?
Gorgeous' number off, yeah.
Uh-huh.
You can just.
Yeah, we could take gorgeous' number off and just have them call us if there's a comment.
Yeah.
And that would give us room to just slide it down.
How's that work now? Do they handle the calls or we handle the calls?
Yes.
So, and place it properly.
Both.
He has his number there and plus the town's number.
A lot of calls come into us, Ross will call, gorgeous, gorgeous will give us the handle.
Leave some space in here for the other.
Either me or Ross, and then we'll call the homeowner back.
Okay.
You know, I mean, you can have an extra line there, so where they go check off other.
Yeah, I might as well just put our number.
Okay.
But, by getting rid of that there, that'll move that that project down.
And any other chain, whatever it is, you know?
Okay.
Paint cans, should we put oil base?
No, cause even if it's latex, you can't recycle it, that goes in the trash.
Yeah, unless it's dried out.
No, no, we don't.
Well, that's right, yeah, it goes in the trash, that's right.
Trash, yeah. Yeah.
And it does say cardboard, right?
Uh, yeah, somewhere in, something to do with cardboard.
Two by two or something?
There is the other there too, so they.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's something that says too heavy.
Non-mock plastic, soiled, re-soiled. Food waste mixed in, yeah, we probably oughta add.
Something that says too heavy.
Pizza boxes?
That's soiled.
Soiled recycling, that's why the comments is there, food on your pizza box.
Yeah. So it should say something about, I don't see anything where that comes to, uh, cardboard?
Oh.
You can recycle clean cardboard.
You can, but if it's not cut up, if they put.
Oh, yeah.
So if they just bought a refrigerator and they leave the whole cardboard out there?
Oh, that's this is another.
Yeah, you have to have, you have to, yeah, you have to have it cut up, two by two.
Two by two, right? Two by two cardboard. That's right.
And uh.
Two inches by two inches.
That's why there's a comment section, see, we do need the comment section.
Red.
And the other one said if.
Right, it just said other and then put two lines under the other.
Yeah, but the other that said rejected, it said trash and recycling, didn't it?
I think you guys still have them, I don't have them, I only have this one back here.
Because.
Under the orange one, maybe?
Cause what about if he uh doesn't pick up your trash for a reason, if it's too heavy?
Right.
See, it says recyclable trash and yard, so he can, he can check off a few, you know?
Yeah, not enough recycling, yeah.
Yeah.
You could just, in the comment line, trash too heavy, bag too heavy, I mean, you can do it however you wanna.
Yeah, alright, he can write it, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
You better talk to recycling. Unless we put this up there. It'll fit, they don't have a comments line though.
You could always put one other line, your other, and then that way they can.
Yeah.
Bring it in, um. And we don't deal with yard waste or the white goods here anyway, so there's plenty of room there to add.
No.
Or we could say you're recycling slash trash.
Was not picked up.
Yeah, and then just where the comment section is, you can put the trash items, trash things, hazardous waste, C and D material, or bag two.
Because.
Yeah. Two hundred.
Two hundred.
What did I want, thirty, thirty pounds, is that what Peter's?
Twenty-five, isn't it?
Um, it's not supposed to be in a barrel he- um, larger than forty-six gallon, I don't know about pounds, I just know he doesn't want.
I think it was one.
It's supposed to be twenty-five pounds.
Well, he only has. Talking about trash or recycles?
Trash.
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 Well, the comment thirty-three pound.
I thought it was, I thought it was forty pounds the most.
Thirty-three pounds.
I thought it was thirty.
I only, Peter's only ever told me no barrels, containers bigger than forty-six gallon, cause some people have those huge ones from other towns.
We have a new insert coming out on our trash bag order. That uh, they must be in a town trash bag and securely tied. Uh, or will not be picked up, I don't know if anybody's gonna read that, but it also cannot be in, cannot be loose in barrels, right? Is that what it says? I think that's what it says, trash.
Trash, well, it has to be in a bag.
Yeah. A lot of funny things happen out there.
Yeah, they do.
So, well, four items under the trash, so here we have the trash, not in proper bag.
Mm-hmm.
Too heavy, hazardous waste or construction, there you go.
Where the comments are.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll just all push down.
But I, I didn't even think of that, not in the proper bag, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Or having the bag tied inside the knot at the top of the bag.
Yeah.
I like the word, I like rejected though, can we say rejected?
No, I understand. Oh, I was gonna say rejected in the process, though.
Okay. And you got the trash, right, slash trash, recycling slash.
Big old. Yes, slash trash, yeah, got it.
Cool.
Alright, so I'll talk to Deval and have it like drafted and then you guys look at it in the next.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're productive.
We're up. Okay.
What?
Sorry.
Well, uh, we're gonna go, we're gonna go on the road.
Yeah. Roadie.
Well, yeah.
You on?
Oh, I lost my agenda.
No, hey, yeah.
I'm shy. Yeah, well, this is.
You're shy.
Curbside textile recycling contract.
Okay, so.
Um.
That's not it, right?
No.
Let's re-look at it.
There was one thing, yeah, it was actually, yeah, proved a contingent on David Gay's recommendations.
They've talked about it a lot. No. So, David Gay said he wanted, um, or he recommended a change, which was a sixty day timeframe if either party decided that they wanted to, sixty day notice. If either party wanted to, um.
Opt out?
Opt out. I. You guys read David's, which is, it's in there, and said, send it to Waste Zero and see if they would be willing to amend the contract.
Yep.
It is in there, his reply, and, and they had no problem doing that.
Mm-hmm.
So we have the new contract, um, they sent us three copies. David Gay did suggest that we get a certificate of insurance from the contractor before we, um, enter into the agreement. I do not have that yet, um, I didn't realize till this morning that I didn't have that, so I emailed him, but before the meeting, we, we didn't have it. So I'm not sure if you gentlemen wanna vote on it and just make it.
Pending.
Yeah, we can make a contingent on that.
Hmm, sorry.
I think I would still check with Torres Insurance to make sure what we have is sufficient, or what they need.
Oh, yes, you said that. So, once they get it to me, send it to Rob and ask him if it's enough, or just, okay.
Yeah, probably.
Alright, so this is what they sent me, I'm not sure if it's three copies so that we can keep one, uh-uh.
He's embarrassed to eat.
So you already put the sixty days in here, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yes.
Food milk, beans, and.
Can you get into my email address?
I didn't.
Do you wanna, um.
They didn't fix it, did they?
Yeah.
Term.
No, I can't. Well.
There's probably way too do it, but yeah.
On tags, they have their own tags, it's like their own.
I'm not gonna read it.
I don't like to sign those, it's a news for your email.
Where they mark the stuff?
And I'd sign it to the computer, but I don't.
No, but I think.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, six, right in the beginning, sixty days.
Not much. It's all trash stuff now, we dealt with the lawn stuff.
This is the.
Why does that come back to us? General fund, the same thing, right?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'm sorry, what?
The one cent?
It would have to be general fund.
Go back to our, yeah, I'm just.
Well, David had recommended renew on month-to-month basis, they didn't do that, they didn't put that in there.
Okay, no, they didn't. This is still the same as this.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
So he changed to sixty days, but didn't add in maybe no rule part? Right.
Yeah, they didn't change it at all.
Oh, even the sixty days, is it?
That's, that's there.
Sixty, sixty, it was in there prior to, it's just, um.
They talked about renewing for one additional three-year period.
It's, it's.
Um, David wants on a month-to-month basis.
It says.
Oh, they recommend.
Terms shall automatically renew for the extension term.
So it's automatically renewing for three years as opposed to month-to-month, right?
Yeah.
We renew this month, month-to-month, but you have to give sixty days notice.
Agree to not agree, no, it's, uh.
Let me.
I'm sure, I'm sure they read it and just, oh, it was an oversight.
Yeah.
Reach back up and tell them.
Yeah, and we have to wait for the insurance anyway, so just tell them, we're meeting on the, uh.
Okay. So they need to revise it to month-to-month?
Month-to-month, and by then they'll have the insurance, and we can approve them, they can start, they said they can start anytime, right?
Right.
This is why we shouldn't have a storm on me the morning after or Board of Health needs, there's a ton of stuff to do after a meeting.
But they have to send out a bunch of.
That was his only recommendation too, other than the insurance, yeah.
Yeah.
I think they just overlooked it.
Okay, so, next meeting.
Okay, so we'll, uh.
The meeting's ending.
We table that for now until we get traction copy.
Motion. Make the motion to table the contract until Thursday the eighth, November eighth.
Yeah.
Okay. Ten second, uh, motion made, accepted, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
I like.
Pose, motion carries, the table. Leash law regulations, if you're discussing that, I know we had approved this, uh, last meeting. But after some discussion in the office and further thought, uh, we had a few questions. Perhaps things that, was it the leash law or the stumps, leash law, right?
Leash law, yeah, um, so, I revised the leash law to add in the fines for subsequent violations.
Yeah.
But when Todd looked it over, he had a lot more questions, so that's what the second page is.
Okay.
Just that we should clarify a little more so that it's not being.
You have to follow along with the way my brain works.
Yeah, I guess so.
What if we don't like that? It's like, uh, you ever see that movie, The Beautiful Mind, and he writes all over it, man?
There's, um, it's for discussion, how, how much you wanna clarify this so that when there are repeated offenses, it's specific as to how we're gonna.
How much of this is just like typo tick things, cause anything more than what we said we would revise during the hearing, we have to reopen the hearing.
I don't.
Readvertise it.
Well, like, for example, it says twenty-five dollars a day for boarding, what's a day? You know, if you pick up my dog at ten in the morning and I can pick up at noon, is there a boarding charge, even though you've kept it in the shelter?
Uh-oh.
It's a twenty-four hour period.
So they have twenty-four hours to get their dog and then after twenty-four hours is a fee?
Well, I mean, a day is.
Day is defined in all kinds of regulations, it's assumed as a twenty-four hour period.
Right, but if you have my dog for an hour, does it be twenty-five dollars a day?
Does it be, absolutely.
That's, yeah.
Been in your possession for some part.
And tomorrow, the same day, next day?
Next day starts at, what, if you picked it up at ten AM, starts at ten AM?
Yeah, she'll, she'll have record of when she picked up the dog.
I. Okay.
And she's trying.
Oh, it said if the dog needs to stay at the shelter while you get your documents. So, I think.
But should it be a day if it's only three hours?
So twenty-five dollars, right, up to twenty-four hours and each twenty-four hour increment thereafter is twenty-five dollars.
Depends, it's the first offense or second offense.
But the offense is only based, is only a fine, it has nothing, it doesn't say that each offense is a different boarding charge too, so.
That's true.
I guess as I was just reading it, I'm like, because it says, like, it starts off with if your dog is off your property, it will be picked up. And then the next one says if the dog does not have a town tag, it will be taken to the shelter, so it's just. It was just a, I guess it didn't flow well, I know she took this from like Rahoboth or something like that, and like, so as I was reading it, I'm like, it just seemed like a bit tweaking.
As long as she recalls the time she's picking up this animal and it's twenty-four hours. I think, a day.
But is it, if it's over the twenty-four hours, it's still?
Second day.
Actually, the way that all my regulations work is midnight starts in the day.
That's usually, yeah, makes it much simpler.
Yeah. Has nothing to do with, you don't have to track.
If you pick up the dog at, at eleven fifteen at night.
I know, you pick up the dog and you're picking up before midnight, it's one day, after midnight, it becomes a second offense, second day.
And you don't pick it up.
Yeah, why don't you change the date on your form, that's next day, it should be that way.
Right. Yeah, the dog gets picked up at eleven o'clock at night and you don't pick it up till ten o'clock the next morning, it's two days.
That's how. Right, that's, and that's how all my regulations work.
So it's taken for granted a day, or any portion of a day is a, is a day.
Yeah, up to midnight, that day is a day. The, the individual always has the right to come in front of us and.
Yeah.
And then at that time.
Well, so now here's the thing, so Stacy picks up the dog at ten in the morning and she keeps it overnight until the next morning, I show up. Do I have to pay her for the boarding charge and the vaccine charge before I can get my dog? And then you have the fine, say it was my second offense, and then there's a fine, does the fine get paid to the town clerk and the boarding charge gets paid to the ACO or the Board of Health?
Yeah, the fine gets paid to the town clerk.
Yeah, right, but what about the boarding charge?
Goes to the kennel, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would come to us.
Does that get paid at the town clerk as well?
Well, if. Well, if it's a Sunday, and it's Sunday morning, you're picking up your dog, you can't wait for the town clerk, so the fine is separate from the boarding, I get that.
Fines always go to clerk.
But, so instead, and you know, so Stacy can take checks only, obviously, in order to, to get the, to be able to use the dog.
Yeah, she's gonna actually open the thing to give you a dog, so does she take, I don't know, does she take the money at that time?
Yes. She doesn't take money right now because there's no fees for boarding, right?
I guess it's established.
Right.
I think the fees are paid to the kennel, wherever the location of the dog is, that's my professional issue.
Yeah.
I wish you was, I wish you was here to clarify that part, but, uh.
Prior to picking up your dog, yeah.
She can work out the logistics of that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we can always.
We can figure that out, but it, this makes sense though, you pay.
Sure.
At that time. The dog needs to stay.
I mean, we can let it run and if things start getting weird and we're getting people appealing things left and right, we can revise the regulations, so.
Yeah, we'll have to. Yeah, we'll have to clarify it, that's all. What else did you have up there?
No, that was it, basically, there was some other stuff, it was just like I didn't.
There were a couple typos in there.
Yeah, a couple typos and a couple of, you know, a couple commas missing or whatever, but most of it was, um, like, I wrote both because if your dog does not have an updated rabies vaccine, that applies to both dogs, whether it's your dog that's off your property unleashed or the dog does not have a tag. But it didn't specify that, it just says if your dog does not have it, but it's kind of following after if the dog doesn't have a town tag, so.
Can't get a town tag without rabies.
But the rabies may be expired. You get your tag in January, and if the tag expires in February, the rabies expires in February and she picks up the dog in March.
True, true.
I asked her about that, cause I'm like, can it have a tag without her vaccine, so, but she said it could expire.
Actually, the rabies vaccine is a whole nother fine.
So. Well, there, there's a separate fee for that and it says at your expense, so.
Yeah.
And at the bottom where it says cash box receipt book, that's a whole nother.
Well, that was if Stacy was gonna be able to take cash for the.
Well, he can check, she's.
That's, that's an internal thing that we need to figure out.
Should be like.
Well, that was just things that hit my mind.
They said, it says checker money order only, I wouldn't even start with the cash.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no cash.
No, no, should be cash, okay.
Like, I mean, the thoughts that went to my head.
No, but she's done.
We don't, we don't take it anyways, any, any department you go and takes on.
No, but I'm just saying she's gonna need a cash box.
I think five, many others, you always chat.
It's not gonna happen.
We take cash.
We take cash. I'm saying, I like other things you go to, right, when you pay, like, when you, I'm just thinking like the fireplace, you, they don't take cash at the fireplace. I don't know.
No.
No.
You don't.
No. So I don't think she should take cash.
Checker money order.
Well, whoever's accepting the cash needs to be bonded, so, that's why I say it's an internal thing, but if you wanna say checks only, that's checker money only, that's fine.
No.
I think that's how you go practice now, right? Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Like at the transfer station, it's checks only, yeah.
Checks.
Yeah. She, we, we got this from what, Rahoboth, you said?
Yes, uh, most of it, I believe, was from Rahoboth.
Yeah.
And then she tweeted for some stuff and I think this board could added a couple things, so. I mean, you can run the way it is, it was just like, say, as I was reading it, it was like, you know, it didn't flow quite right for me, but anyhow.
Doesn't matter, we can run with it and revise it as necessary, if we need to.
So, the process, just if you gentlemen are okay with this, it's gonna get signed and then stamped with the clerk. Then she keeps a copy upstairs, I guess.
We put it, we have, we already have like a book going or a binder or something in our office?
For what?
For all our regs, we should probably get like a little binder together with all our regs now, we've been just one after the other.
Yeah.
The regs should be on the website as well.
And they're on the website, but they're all like broken up.
Well, that's all we're working on, is a consolidated.
I, I just made, yeah, I just made a book where it just has all the tabs, and every time we make one, I just put it in, you know?
Maybe somebody will leave it under the Christmas tree for us.
Okay. And this way you can always, you just, somebody's at the front, somebody's at the front desk and they'll discuss it in front of you, you can just break it out.
Rest in peace. Okay, so we'll let this go, right, run with the comment line, is that we approved?
I'll just need one of these signed.
Yeah, well, except for the typos, we fixed the typos.
Yeah.
There was a couple typos, I think that we had said in the hearing that we were gonna fix anyway, there were a couple typos, like these regulations, some of this regulation.
Oh.
Uh, yeah.
I just think we remember that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the first paragraph, there should be two sentences, capital if, but, and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, next meeting.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
I don't work anybody short. Uh, moving to six D, if you're discussing that, stump and wood waste burial regulations, again, this is one we approved. But, uh, after thinking about it, uh, no fines were added.
You did it.
We intended.
Yeah, we decided we weren't.
He left the room for like twenty minutes and he's upset that we covered too much without him.
Four minutes. Four minutes.
Yeah.
They went through half of September, I thought I was good. Clearly not.
So you gentlemen did pass this, but we realized we need to set some tie and go some.
Um, non-criminal disposition.
Well, this is kinda, for those of you who never, I think we all did, we looked for some reference material, uh, from other communities. And, uh.
Sorry.
Very, very few, uh, resources out there for stumps and wood waste disposal regulations. I don't know, DEP must have fines out there, maybe we could go, go find with DEP, the.
All we could find is that they have regulations on what like wood waste was, but they, they don't have any regulations saying you can't do it, so.
Okay. Um. I, I shared this with the building commissioner, and I have to agree that we shouldn't treat this one lightly. Because of the consequences down the road that, um, these contracts is going to subdivision and we charge them fifty bucks for burying stumps, I don't care. So, you know, um.
But they still have to remove it.
Yeah.
So that's the thing, I, I think, I think it should go the same thing, criminal disposition, we have the one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we just fine and say, I'll see you, it's still fine. And you still open violation.
Right, cause if it's three hundred dollars, they, you know, it's cheaper to bury it than it is to haul the stumps away.
They still gotta, yeah, that, that, it's an open violation.
None of each, each day is an ongoing violation, it would be hooven to pick them up.
And then eventually, if there's no action, you have the right to bring them into the court.
Yeah, for not a.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good idea.
And see compliance.
Yeah.
Cause that's, that's just another tool, a, a way to get compliance.
Yeah.
Cause when we get up to three hundred dollars every day.
Yeah.
And it's seven days a week, that's two grand a week.
And then, I never had to bring anybody to court through non-criminal disposition, how long does it take to actually get a hearing with the court?
Long time.
Yeah, cause.
Sorry.
Long time.
See, that's my problem, in the meantime, you still have stumps that are buried there.
Well.
Oh, I don't, not like a year or two, it'll probably be like s- four to six months.
Yeah, yeah. Cause the thing is, they'll either, they'll either pay the fine.
To me, that's a long time.
Pines are pruing.
That's, well, by that time, I could issue a CO, so, you know.
I'm used to criminal stuff that you're in the next week.
Well, unless, unless we say that any permits on the, are, are suspended until such thing as this is resolved.
I have to make sure it's not a conflict with the building code and I have legal authority to withhold a CO for that.
Hmm.
And the thing, but the thing is, there's no other way, cause you can't make them besides that, the judge is gonna order them to do it.
Well. Well, Board of Health could, if this is a Board of Health right, we could stop them from getting a COC.
That's right. Yeah, you could put, yeah, you could.
Then it's not dragging you into it.
As long as there's a septic system, you can, cause then you can withhold the signature for the certificate of compliance, alright, that's an option.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was thinking another way is just hit them with a thousand dollar fine to make them think that was serious. And, you know, you, then that would give you the authority to say, come back tomorrow, I want the stumps removed, I wanna see them, I want clean fill in the hole, and I'll consider waiving you a thousand dollar fine.
Yeah, three hundred dollars a day will add up real quick too, will you?
It will, the only, you're right, I agree, but you still need to go to collect, collect that money. Well, no, they'll either pay the clerk, if they pay the clerk and it's, it's, just say they paid, they say, oh, I'm sorry, I paid them, and they didn't comply, that's when it's open violation. If they mark the back of that and say, I wanna hear, that's when they have their right to due process, that's when you get them in front of a clerk magistrate or a judge if you're lucky, but normally a clerk magistrate, and you say, your, uh, your honor, I'm just looking for compliance. Okay. And they'll either have to pay the fine and they'll tell the gentleman, it's gonna be another fine according to this guy, the Board of Health, if you don't pay this. I like that idea, the only thing I would say to the board is, I like Todd's idea of linking it to the certificate com- uh, completion, compliance. That would stop me from issuing the occupancy permit, that gets people's attention right away.
Real fast.
That's right, we don't have to sign off.
Right.
We don't, they won't be in court six months.
So, I could just say, uh, violations on, um, viol- uh, violations on properties with open permits, um, will not be issued, some, this type. Will not be acted upon. Will not be acted, yeah. Does that, can we?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't change the line, well, we're gonna add a fine, so.
It's just a full.
We don't need another public hearing on that, do we?
We've never had one for this.
Adding a fine?
We've never had.
Oh, that's why we didn't have one for this.
Right, we were discussing putting it on for whatever that meeting was in November or December, so.
Mm-hmm.
So this would be added right to the.
So how was it, violations with, um, with open permits?
The way you wrote it was violations on properties with open permits would not be acted on by the Board of Health until remediated and fines paid.
Huh?
Yeah, we're just, simple three hundred dollars.
I don't know if remediated is the right word.
Yeah, that's good, that just, the only one that this wouldn't, the only time that that wouldn't apply, and I would need to check on my end, is if you had s- a house with sewer.
Hmm.
And this happened, then you don't have any authority because you don't have a certificate of compliance, so I don't know that I could hold up a COC for that, so, I'd have to look into it.
Technicalities.
When, when do we approve this last meeting?
I think it was the last meeting.
Yes.
Two thousand nine.
I think so too.
I do.
Yeah, I think it was.
And what did we say the time, was three hundred dollars flat up, or was it the one, two, three?
It's the one, two, three. Yeah, it's the non.
Which is that whole twenty-one D stuff, yeah, yeah.
And it's a, it's a basic plan schedule, except for the tobacco, which is one.
We'll probably pretty much just copy and paste that.
I don't think you can change it where any, any properties with a nuisance.
Right, so that's why I put it with the one I already marked up.
Copy and paste it.
Just leave it like that, follow the MGO.
You just gotta add the extra sentence or two.
And something like that, if you, it's more of a short leash where you say, can you please do this, a lot of times people just say, yeah, no problem, but some would just have to continue into buried stumps. You just find them. Do we have any violations like this?
Oh, I'm seeing.
I'm sorry, do we have any violations like this, burying stumps? Oh, yeah.
Whoa.
Yeah, we're, we're actually finding stumps, previous burial sites now as a decomposal.
Yeah.
So it's a pretty widespread practice.
Well, they can rehab it truly.
Maybe it was.
Especially when you're trying to put in a soil, I mean, a, a system. I've had a few instances where I've had houses that were built in the last ten years.
Are you, uh, are we making a motion to resent our previous vote?
By my tenure.
That we had.
How about a den?
Stump explosions because.
A, a den, a den, man.
Stump explosions because, and I've actually wanted them to be removed.
Yeah.
We could do that.
It was a challenge because it was a safety issue, but at that point.
Yeah.
Because we haven't run the public hearing yet, so.
No, yeah, we just.
Safety issue, because I have a, I have cabinets in the backyard, you know?
So I'll make a motion that we amend the stump and wood waste disposal regulations to include uh violation and penalties.
Okay.
Second. Motion made second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That one carries also. Want to talk about more regulation changes or wait till our next meeting?
That one's gonna need to be tabled 'cause we haven't had time to.
Make motion to table six E.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made second and tabled six E, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? That carries also. Payroll and bills.
Yeah, go past that. Go on to health agent, please.
Health agent?
You are.
Well, thank you.
I will keep it very pithy. Um, so in last week I think it was, we issued a letter for a home that had some stuff piled up in their yard that we thought was a nuisance, so um ourselves and the building inspector sent letters um to them. Friendly letters basically saying, do something about this. If you don't by the end of the month, um, we're gonna issue a health order, so. Haven't heard anything yet, so. Um, there was a seminar that um Rosalind was looking up um for some trainings, and one of them was for managing multiple bosses. And it has to deal with people who have to answer to multiple bosses, i.e. emergency preparedness, stormwater committee, Board of Health, town administrator. So her and I are, we get strained sometimes trying to deal with multiple bosses, like say we have a Board of Health meeting tonight, we get a stormwater meeting tomorrow. And um there was this, a webinar, and we felt, you know, there might be something that would help us.
If you take this something, I personally, if you feel there's something that'll help you with your job, that's reasonable, I'm all for it.
Yeah, it was like a hundred and forty nine dollars I think for the, the webinar, so. Um, might be something we could open up to other people in town hall.
Could you guys do it at the same time?
Yeah.
Alright.
Um, and it's, say other people in town hall might be interested in, in jumping in or whatever, and if enough of them are doing it, then maybe it's not on the Board of Health to, to pay for it, but.
I'm gonna take a, a. Yeah.
Maybe the selectmen would pay for it, and we could have the webinar up in the.
Where, when is it?
Well, they've always, they, they always run it, so. It's, there was one this week, which is how we noticed it, but they're continuing, it's like, you know, every month or two, there's always one.
Oh.
But, they said, we, we, we struggle sometimes trying to, you know, no offense, you'll walk in and say, hey, I want this, but we're trying to work on something that somebody else needs for some other meeting, and it's like, alright, how do you tell you no, I don't have time right now? But we can't, you're our boss.
Tell me.
Take the webinar.
Yeah.
So.
Prioritize, really.
That's what I do, I prioritize. Everything I do is prioritized. Whatever needs my attention first is what I work on.
You're gonna get a lot of this, you probably already do. My closing's tomorrow, well.
Oh.
Yeah.
I, that's great. Make sure you have all your paperwork informed me and I can help you.
If true.
Yeah.
But don't, don't make me look for everything.
Right.
You gotta give it to me.
Closing's in sixty minutes. I don't have an ass belt. What do you mean, what's an ass belt?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's managing the public. That's different from managing your boss, is, so.
Well, I can tell you that I have a few people that lean on me for different things, and I have no problem telling them, absolutely, it will be my priority as soon as this one is done or this one is done. And, and I have never had a problem yet, so um, people have to understand that. You're only one person, so. And as long as you're prioritizing things in the med- interest of public safety, there's no one that can argue with you.
If you can get a bunch of people together on that one.
Yeah, it might, it'd be great.
I think all you do is touch base with Valerie.
Sounds like you could benefit from that.
And say, look at, well, this, is this helpful to, you know, we'd like to get involved. Anybody else here in town hall? Probably be helpful to all of them, especially Karen.
Yeah, we can reach out.
Well, that's what we figured, us, Karen.
She, she for sure would probably, 'cause she, she gets pulled in a lot of different directions by people who aren't necessarily her boss too.
Mm.
Mm-hmm.
Anyhow.
I like it.
Yeah, we can reach out tomorrow. Um, the other thing was, we were, we had a very successful uh Friday. Was it last?
Week?
Filing?
Oh, the filing party.
Oh.
The filing party. Um, we did well, but we still have a long way to go, so we were looking to schedule the second, 'cause we had talked about doing two Fridays. So we're looking to schedule um another Friday to do that. Um, looking at the calendar, November second.
Which is a
was about
Next Friday, it's pretty close, but.
It was next Friday. Would be po- a possibility.
I cannot do the ninth, otherwise it's okay.
Second?
Second.
I don't see a problem with that.
Gavin can come?
Yeah, I don't have anything there. Hopefully I'm having, yeah, but second's good.
Alright, so we will schedule it, oh, I'm sorry, would the board like to schedule an office filing date for November second from twelve thirty to four thirty P M?
Yes.
That works.
So Jim will be there? Yeah, we'll get posted as a meeting, right?
Yeah.
Jim will be there to help us out?
I do have a request to the board though, if I may interrupt.
Well, um, let, let me finish my report first.
Well, okay. It's on that topic, so.
Alright.
Prior.
Oh, alright, I, I'm done with my report.
See, you already learned, you learned it fast. Uh, as part of my um, uh software integration and archiving um endeavor, I need to uh tag and label all of the files that we have been working on so diligently over the past few months. Um, I reached out to the sub- selectmen for some help in getting an intern in here to do that work. I've never had any experience getting an intern. So I didn't know if the board could s- help me in the right direction, or if you had, I know you've worked with an intern before. I wasn't integral part of obtaining that intern and the process. So instead of waiting for the selectmen's office to intervene, I, maybe your board could shed some light on where I can reach out to for an intern. Because now, I think with the Board of Health files being integrated, it could be also someone in the Board of Health field who would be, who might benefit from doing that kind of work.
The only ones I've ever had experience with, and I think there was a couple, they were available like in, not until May.
Right.
Like summer.
Right.
Uh, I don't know the available, call Bridgewater, that would be your best bet.
I called them, they said they didn't have anybody available.
Yeah, I, I think it's on probably in the summer, for intern programs.
Yeah. Yeah. So I.
You can't wait that long, right?
I don't wanna wait that long.
Would that be considered community service? 'Cause all the high schools now require like ten hours a year or whatever.
The other issue that I have with that is that if those, those files are of high priority, I just don't want anyone labeling them, because it needs to be done correctly. So the other option that I thought of, which, which may, I have money in my budget to pay someone to do that. Um, so I don't know if your board would be inclined to allow Roz or someone to do something like that. I don't wanna overburden her, but I do wanna get this done. I don't wanna wait every day that goes by that we can't put our fingers on that stuff fast. Don't get me wrong, we're light years away from where we were, but we just need to get this done, so.
That's an, that's an option, and what about that? What is it? I don't know what it's called. The senior workoff thing? Can they do it?
Um.
Uh, yeah. That's a process.
Yeah.
It's worked out in Free Town. We had a few good people in there. They did a good job.
Town meetings.
I will respectfully disagree with your statement, 'cause I had to work with some of them, I'm doing perk tests, but.
I had, oh yeah, well, it's, I don't know, maybe in the field, but I had a couple people who worked in our office and they were cherry, they, they did their job.
I know you still were using them for doing filing and, and data entry stuff, so.
I could do that on Fridays if, if, once we get our stuff settled, which hopefully after this next filing date, it'll be much further along, yes.
It requires some computer literacy, you need a label machine, and you need to have a conscience of what the files are in order for it to be done right. Anybody can do it, but if it's not done right, then we aren't gonna be able to use the files.
Yeah. And, and they would need a computer to be working it to, to do that.
Right. Yeah.
Oh, right.
'Cause they can't sit at her desk, 'cause then she wouldn't have a desk.
Right, well, I was, if, if we went with an intern, I was gonna get a, a laptop and a label maker and, and let the intern use that, that, that equipment. Um, but.
You know, that's between you two, what you do. I mean, I don't think our board has a problem with the opportunity. Um, you might also wanna think about, and I don't know, other than Carrie, who works part-time, that has experience generally in that area. Um, post something for part-time hours.
Okay.
Uh, if you don't, if she's not working full-time, twenty-nine.
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay, that's the thing, you can't pay overtime, right? That won't be overtime.
Well, that, that is the problem.
It's a fine.
They may frown on that.
Well, if Roz, if Roz did it, then it would be, it would be overtime, and that, that may be a concern, so.
Yeah.
Um, not that you're not worthy, it's just, you know, okay.
You don't, you don't wanna step on something, you don't wanna, in case.
Well, that's kinda why I wanted to ask is, you know, I'm looking for some ideas, 'cause the intern thing, at least from where, where I'm, where I'm standing, doesn't seem to be an option. So I just didn't know if you knew an avenue that I didn't know, so.
If it was May, I would.
How's, how soon do you need it done?
We're, we're in these files right, right now, um, and.
Yeah.
I mean, it's some, is it something you want done the next two months, or something you want done the next four months?
I'd like it, I'd like, no, I'd, I'd like this to be, you know, maybe in the next latest, first of the year, no.
Two weeks?
I'd like it done by January, before the budget season starts.
You know what, hell?
I, isn't the budget season already started? You're laying this in the other day to do budget stuffs.
So ideally like a part-time person.
Yeah, okay, alright, I just wanted to throw it out there, 'cause I'm not, I'm not gaining on it and it's frustrating me, so.
I have to, I, I gotta think about it more than.
Okay.
Well, now that you guys have seen our filing system, you've tried to work in it, you understand how difficult it is right now, so.
It's important to have the labels legible and, and then we can, once we have all the files in, that's the other thing. We're lo- reluctant to put streets on the cabinets, because we may need to shuffle things around. So, you know, what you're doing is great, you need to get your stuff in there, and then we can really establish where everything is gonna stay,
Hmm.
and then label everything appropriately. And it's really, I mean, it's, it's ironic, it's something so trivial, it's taken so long to do, but anyone who needs anything now goes and picks it out of the thing, and it's all there.
Yeah, I know.
You know?
Yeah, it's awesome.
So, um, so this has been instrumental. I just wanna get it done and execute it, so. So we move on to the next thing.
See, we're fortunate, we did a, 'cause we're getting our annual stipend, but we don't mind going in on a variety and, and doing something.
Yeah, it, it, it needs to be someone who's focused, and I think it needs to be one person, so that they can be consistency.
So we start it, one end, do it.
There's, there's seventeen cabinets full to the brim, so it's not an easy task. It's gonna take some time.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, thank you.
I might help you. Maybe.
It was a lot of work, just that one day, and it was four hour.
And you only did one, one street name?
Oh my god, I did Williams.
Well, this one, this is the longest street, right?
It's a big street.
Oh, god. I think the pile just kept adding, I was like, what the heck?
Yeah, but I did the entire other counter while he did one street, so.
Right.
Williams is a long street.
Well, that's why when I undertook this venture two years ago, I, I told everyone this was gonna be a long-term process, but once we have it done, you know, it's gonna be instrumental in our daily activities in, in making things around efficiently, so.
It's already, we can already notice it's getting better and better and better, but we still got a lot of Board of Health files to in- incorporate, so.
That's like four years ago, all this should be done by street, not pull out a piece of paper and cross-reference it, and then cross-reference it three more times.
I said that.
So I was out on a perk test today in another town, and the guy pulled up his phone, and he had a
When you came in.
What the hell is that?
program in there, and he was entering in the perk times and the GPS locations of the test pits and everything right in there, and was uploading right to the, the town website.
We're gonna do that in Lakeville.
It was like, holy crap. I was like, the kid was like twenty-eight years old or whatever, and um, he was, he was on his game.
Well, we can get there once we get all this preferable stuff out of the way.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, I mean, don't forget, we, I, you know.
Come along with him, eight months.
I had, I had fifty-two banker's boxes full of permits by year.
In the last two years.
This is, you know, this is ridiculous, so we're, we're getting there, and we'll, we'll, we'll be there, 'cause we can evolve.
Yeah.
Wow. That's Joe. Yeah. That's, uh, that's where they filed back then, huh?
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Wanna, maybe back?
Uh-huh.
Wanna go back to eight? Um.
Payroll and bills?
Payroll and bills.
I thought we did that.
We didn't, we skipped it. Um, so I've got for looks like the first couple few weeks here, in October, we had three thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in payroll and seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars in expenditures.
That's the same stuff Jen sends us, right?
No.
Good Jen's send you.
Jen's send you stuff?
Yeah, no, those are the bills. Like, we had to order invoices for the transfer station, um, office supplies, I needed toner for my printer, um, and then just payroll. Actually, this is a very slow expense week. It's the week that we have Borges and, then it's, you know, forty thousand as opposed to a few hundred.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I, I read them already.
Yeah, you had the same form.
Do we need a motion to approve that? It's already approved.
Yeah, it's already, it's just a.
Just FYI.
It's a FYI, yeah.
Well, actually, the, if we're having one person
Thank you.
sign them without acting on them, then it's required by law that we do that. So that's why we do that part of the uh process.
Keep more than enough.
Yeah.
So, alright. So, why are we really? Got nothing, right?
No, we got a meeting tomorrow. We had to talk about the, the fines and stuff, but no, um, nothing to report there.
No. Emergency preparedness, I think we'll have a little bit more after the November.
Yeah, right now we're waiting for the, the selectmen to process the disposal of the cots, and then we'll be getting rid of the cots. We've tried to order the, the new cots, but apparently all the cots that the company made have been shipped to Florida. So right now they're out of stock, but apparently they'll have them in stock by the beginning of November and.
But we did order them. They're watered, it's just.
And then, I, when are we planning to do ours with assembly? The, uh, the drill?
February or March.
They're gonna do it at the end to the end.
Yeah. With everything else going on.
Just check with the school.
Yep.
Yeah, we've got them.
That's time to get in there.
We've got the school calendar, so.
Perfect.
Until we got there.
Any questions?
Do you have a couple? Um, Tom Ferry brought in this flyer that he wanted you guys to look at, and I got an email that was um forwarded from the town administrator, and it's for Public Services. They're asking about an R F P for the trash pickup for two thousand nineteen. So just an FYI, I know we'll be, Borges' contract is up, um, June thirtieth, and I'm just not sure how you wanna.
I'm quite certain we'll be going out R F Ps for the pickup.
That's what we've done the last.
And I might as well put it out there now, which, uh, with approval of the board, my thoughts are we should go back to recycling pickup every two weeks instead of every week uh to save about thirty or forty thousand dollars with the cost of recycle, but we'll talk about that when it comes time. Um, superior waste in recycling. You can drop off, or we can pick up.
Have to get more info on that, that's kind of a.
Mister Mass.
Is there, was there info on that thing?
Yeah, when we dropped it off and said you want.
The charge? I wonder.
Couldn't tell ya.
What was the other one we had last meeting? Somebody else wanted, somebody else wanted to do something.
That's.
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll talk to Tom about this, 'cause I wanna talk to him about the E, E cycle anyway.
I don't know what it was, the E cycle, yeah.
Oh, yep.
Is everyone coming out? So that doesn't have too much information? Matches, this side of?
No, not really.
Any, uh, we do have minutes, one set of minutes total, right?
Okay, nice. Yep. So there's copies here for everybody, and then the top one's Tom's.
But. I, I read it.
I did.
Yeah, me too.
But I already read it.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October tenth, two thousand eighteen, as prepared by Rosalind Vazey.
Second.
Motion's made in second to approve. Motion's made in second to approve the minutes of October tenth. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. I'll keep a comment for myself.
Okay, thank you. And a couple of short announcements.
Let me read.
Yeah, that's.
Announcements, early voting is being held in the town of Dayton during the weeks of October twenty second and October twenty ninth, two thousand eighteen. For the November sixth state election, early voting will take place in the lower level of town hall during the hours of seven thirty A M to four thirty P M, Monday through Thursday. A free breakfast for Dayton veterans will be held at the West Dayton Congressional Church, twenty seven sixty seven Horton Street, Dayton Mass, nine o'clock A M on Saturday, November tenth, eight, two thousand eighteen. A pumpkin painting party hosted by Parks and Recreation will be held on October twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen, twelve P M to four P M at the pavilion behind town hall. Please bring a non perishable food item for the Dayton Lions Food Bank, volunteers are still needed for this event.
Pumpkin painting party, save that three times, huh?
Now you're gonna draw. Um.
We have enough cold weather for extended period of time to get rid of the mosquitoes?
I think after tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, yeah, four hours of twenty eight degrees, right?
Yeah, I think tomorrow night.
Yeah, worry about mosquitoes, but I I'm seeing, I think that ticks are becoming very active.
Yeah.
Um, so we go from one one nuisance pest insect to another nuisance insect. Uh, so, be careful, uh, when you're out there doing your leaves or whatever, and people have told me that when they go outdoors, they wear white socks and pull them up over their pants, and they can see the ticks crawling up their white socks, and just brush them off, but uh, I was very surprised yesterday to find one on my one year old granddaughter's head, which, uh, I don't know, can't imagine how it would've got there, but I did speak with one person who uh, had a fourteen, I think, and they were only outside doing leaves for a while on. So, clearly, it must be kind of active, just uh, make sure you check yourself, uh, there's a song about that, check you for ticks.
There is, very good.
You didn't know that?
Thanks.
That's a country song.
It's a country song, you know that song.
Oh, Rampage Lee Ticks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did not get that, okay. It's a long day.
I just have a little tidbit about the ticks, if you don't mind, I'm actually in the woods quite often, Todd knows as well.
Sure.
Um, I keep a lint roller, the old lint roller, in my truck, and when I come out of the woods, the, this color shows them very, very well, I just roll my legs with the lint roller, they stick to it, and I discard it accordingly, so, um, it's a pretty easy way to get the ticks off.
I think you were the guy that told me about the white socks over here.
Yeah, I'm sure I was, yeah. So, um, if you're gonna be out in the woods and you know that, and you, uh, you know, my wife and I go hiking all the time, we bring the lint roller with us, and Lyme disease is a nasty disease, so.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Pretty good. And you can pick up lint while you're pulling, you never know, yeah? It's a two foot.
That's why I look those valves.
Yeah.
Does it get up, get those little things from that picker plant that stick in there, does it?
It does, it does, yeah.
Alright. Well, I think we were pretty productive tonight, so, how about a motion to adjourn, as long as nobody's got anything else?
So. Second.
The motion's uh, made in second to adjourn at seven twenty, eight twenty seven, wow, two and a half hours.
Doesn't matter if you do.
Eight. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, good night cable, good night, everybody. Good night, people. All done.
Whoa.
I'm sorry, all I could think of when he says.